I'd like to welcome everybody to our city meeting tonight here at the Commission. And I would ask if you could please silence or turn off your cell phones. And we'll also remind everybody that our meetings are available for viewing every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight, and also on YouTube. We're going to go ahead and open with a Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll begin tonight with old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. There are no questions or comments, just need a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from August 13th to April 4th, regular meeting.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 5-0. Second consideration ordinance, number 8248, approval to levy special assessments for nuisance abatement costs. Our city clerk?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is the second consideration ordinance for the approval to levy the special assessments that we presented the first consideration on the August 13th meeting. Since that first consideration, we did receive payment for three properties, so they were removed from the ordinance this evening. So we're just looking for a roll call vote to approve that.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, anybody?
So the balance in here is includes those properties or is taken out?
It was taken out.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, no comments, we'll just need to do a roll call vote and begin with Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. New business, public comment. Do you have any?
We have several, David Bentley.
Okay, we just ask if you could please keep your comments to two or three minutes, and if you could please state your name and address, that'd be great.
David Bentley, 767 Ottawa Street. I just came here and during the meetings, but I just, I didn't even know this was going to be a budget meeting. But I had heard that the pool might close, and that possibly the theater might be sold. And I just wanted to know if there's any information about that, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Collins.
I've got a couple of questions, I mean, it's Mike Collins, Libra 11th Ward. There was supposedly a survey that went out about this issue. Are you going to reserve, show the results tonight?
So, you know, actually on that, I don't know if we have the results here tonight, but we can share some of the feedback we got from that. As far as actual data goes, I don't have that ready to share tonight, I don't know if we do.
Mr. Mayor, we've been talking about that internally for the last couple of days, we're going to make that available to the public, the results of the survey after the conclusion of the meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay. From there, I really agree with this, but your votes are asking us to come up a little bit more and more ready. So is the school board, and so is the county. How much blood do you think for this midterm?
That's part of the public hearing.
Okay, now, I went to the Times, and all the people who were delinquent in the county on eight pages had a few weeks' notice. And I realized that's the county, so I went in and I took all the 66048 adresses and added them up. There was 1,122 people in the, or entities in the county that did not meet their requirement to pay the taxes. There's 114 of them are in 66048. So about 5% of the population in this town can't pay their taxes. Does that just add an indicator to you that this may be an issue? And so my question is, I look at, if I have it correct, you want about $313,000, $100,000 more, $313,000 more, is that right?
Approximately.
Okay. And so when you do that, you're causing us, taxpayers, to pay that money. And I look at you, if I'm correct, you have a budget of $6.9 million, 61, 61.9, is that right? For next year, and that's your proposed budget?
Yeah, we'll be discussing these also in the public hearing as well.
You can't pick up 5% more. You've got reserve of over $7 million. Can you take some of that money? Can you look at, at, oh, by the way, I understand that there's been someone who has made some recommendations to you as to what you can do to get into that $313, so we don't have to pay. Are we going to talk about that?
So, sir, I appreciate your comments, we need to move on to the next guest if we have that, or on to the public hearing, go forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Mary Berkman.
Mary Berkman, 1801 Second Avenue, and mine is about senior citizen taxes, disabled people. We've worked hard, hard our whole life, some of us are disabled, some of us aren't, and what little bit of savings we have to make ends meet is being sucked out of us from the taxes. My property, I bought the lowest that I could afford, now it's like four or five times more than what I paid for it. And I don't, you know, I'm going to be taxed out of my home and onto the street. My mother's dead, I can't move in with her, where am I going to go? I wouldn't be able to afford a senior citizen home if you tax me out of this, you're sucking up all my savings that I'm paying, mainly taxes and taxes, property taxes and personal, everything taxes. Is there a way that can freeze senior citizens from 65 on up?
Ma'am, we already have, the state has that, I can give you information, it's called the Homestead Act, and then there's the Senior Act for Low Income.
I do apply for the Homestead because I'm such a low, I don't get that much money monthly.
You don't qualify for it.
You know, I'm sucking up my IRA in order to pay my taxes.
The amount of salary went up this year.
It's almost gone.
So you might want to relook at it, because I know they revoted on that.
I save for eons to get this money for a savings account and take care of my elder self, and I'm not going to have any.
I'm willing to show you that information, if you, it sounds like you might already know it, but I'm willing to give you that information if you need it after the meeting.
So is it going to do any good for me to see it?
Ma'am, I don't know your finances, but I can definitely show you the information.
Well, whatever social security pays me right now is mostly my income, which I don't even make with what little bit I take out of my IRA a month, like, I'm sucking off a bit, losing a lot of money, because I need to make ends meet with the taxes. So, you know, I don't know how I'm going to make it in 10 years, I'll be lucky if I can afford myself. I won't have a home to live in, I'll have to sell, and then where am I going to go? So if they can find a way to freeze our taxes, or cut them to a percentage less than the regular working class, it would be greatly appreciated on all ends. There's so many people losing their home left and right.
Absolutely, thank you.
But if they could freeze it, or put a small percentage off.
Thank you.
No one else, sir?
No one else, sir, okay. All right, well, from here, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing of exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and just need a motion to open the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion to the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
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 All right. Public hearing is open, and from here, we'll go with the staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, if you don't mind, I'll just spend a very few minutes talking about the budget process, how we ended up here and arrived this evening, and then you can certainly, we've had comments already, if there's additional people that want to make some comments, they can do that. So, just to review with the Commission for just a very few minutes about how the budget process works, the formal budget process for the city level starts in February, in which the budget team, which is led by our finance director, the assistant city manager, and at that time, Mr. Kramer was still present and had pretty significant impact on the budget prep, was still here. The assessment starts with a really thorough evaluation of last year's budget, and then starting to formulate concepts and ideas and projections about moving forward and how we might prepare the upcoming budget. It generally starts with the preparation and submittals for the capital improvement portion of the budget, in which department directors all sit down with their teams and identify those projects that they want to consider submitting for the budget approval. That information is then vetted through the budget team and reviewed as we begin, you know, to move through the budget process. In March, March 22nd of this year, we sit down with the city commission with a goal-setting session, and that's one of the foundational pieces of the budget process, where we hear from the governing body, the priorities that you set forward, moving the city commission, the city into what you want us to focus our efforts on as a staff, to make sure that we are hearing that information and then funding it if the funding is not appropriate. We did that on March 22nd. We then conclude the CIP budget process, which is given to you on May the 21st. You were given the budget books with the capital projects, and then if you recall, we had a couple of hours with you at a study session in which we went over those projects. The department directors were here with their teams, and they presented those projects for you. In the meantime, while that's going on, we then, the budget team turns its attention to the operational budget. That's generally done in the latter portion of the budget process. We're waiting for information from the county about property valuations, so we can have real numbers to ensure. Again, that process starts at the department director level, the department directors sit down with their teams, they go over line by line, each budget item, each line item, to make sure that they have an understanding about where the budget was last year, what those expenses are, what the costs are, they're evaluating everything that they possibly can to ensure that their budget, that they're going to need going forward, is submitted. That information is then vetted by the budget team as well. We sit down with the department directors and go over those line by line to make sure that we have an understanding of what they're asking for, and that that information is vetted and verified, that we all agree that those are what the numbers are. And that's how we arrive at the budget proposal for the operational piece. If you recall, the operational budget was given to the city commission on June the 18th in the budget books, and then about 10 days later, on June the 28th, we had a day-long budget session in which we all sat in the room, and we talked about all of the budget issues that we're dealing with, the department directors came, they talked to you about how they came to the conclusion and the recommendations for the budget, and then again, the budget team had verified that information, and we arrived at the budget proposal that we are reviewing tonight, which is a flat mill levy proposal from the interim city manager's office and the budget team, which would keep a flat mill levy, which would generate approximately $318,000, because property valuations are calculated, the increase of property valuations went up. And so that's how we arrived at the process tonight. You've had the budget in the CIP for quite some time now, between about the time that we've done that and now, the budget team and myself, our office haven't received any questions or inquiries about budget changes, or consideration for changes to the budget. In terms of the survey, the survey, at the conclusion of one of the city commission meetings, there was a staff direction to do a survey, that was done July 15th through the 21st. That information was correlated and given to the commission for your consideration as you evaluate your decision for the budget. And so that's why we, that's how we arrived here tonight. The budget team is here, prepared to answer whatever questions you might have, but the budget has been submitted, it's been evaluated, it's been vetted, and it's ready for the staff's recommendation or approval for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, you actually have two items that come in a row, your first would be a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Upon that, then you would have a separate hearing on the actual adoption of the budget itself, so a two-step process for you this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Waters, appreciate that. Then from here, we'll move along to citizen comments, if we have any, sir? Okay, so then the floor is open for anybody that'd like to speak to the budget here tonight. And we'll just ask if you'd be able to-
This is actually the resolution not to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Not to exceed that, okay.
Because you're going to have a second hearing on the budget itself.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, for, on this, on this resolution not to exceed, yeah, revenue, or to exceed revenue neutral, so, per citizen comment.
The statute is quite detailed, so I just want to make sure.
No, I appreciate that, yeah, thank you. Okay, nobody has any comments then, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, I move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, yeah, okay. We'll begin voting then with Commissioner Hingela.
This has to be by a roll call vote.
By a roll call vote, oh, gotcha, gotcha.
We've got to vote to close the public hearing.
Yeah, that's, oh, I'm sorry, that's-
No, we haven't voted yet, you've made a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I amend that, this is a straight motion on the floor.
No, it's all right, it's all right.
We're getting ahead of ourselves.
So the motion is to close a public hearing, it's been seconded, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
When we do a roll call vote, are we supposed to say our names? Is that what roll-
It would be preferential in this case if the city clerk were to call your names for a roll call vote.
Okay. So I guess before we move on to item E, to vote whether or not to exceed the revenue neutral rate, do anybody want to give any comments or thoughts around anything right now, or?
Well, I want to say something, I just want to say thank everybody for just their feedback. There was people, you know, didn't want to raise the property taxes, but majority of the people that rested out to me did not want to cut city services, such as the pool, the theater, and one thing that they mentioned that is worth the investment, if we have to make a small increase to keep those resources and services available that the city provides, then they'll be willing to do that. So with that being stated, I'm in support of exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Thank you, thank you. Comments?
Well, I think, you know, our, our mill is at 26.962 is the flat mill, which is compared to everybody else in the county is very good, and it's about half of what it is in Baser and some of the other communities. We have had a lot of, a lot of increases in expenses this year, and that to, to tell us that each year we can't, we can't increase over the previous year just doesn't make any sense to me. So I think because we need, we need it, and I, and you didn't want to talk about, you don't want to talk about the survey, but people didn't want to see anything closed, that was the big thing at the survey. They didn't want to see anything closed that would, other than taken away from police and fire, we can't do that, you know, in our streets, then the only other things that we would have to close, or would have to cut back would be on all these other services. So I'm supportive of keeping the mill levy flat.
Thank you. Any comments?
I just think it's also important to note that the state mandated this, correct, for us to do this revenue neutral?
Correct.
And their budget is not revenue neutral, so.
The state is not subject to this.
Right, exactly, how convenient, right? So, so yeah, that's all I have to say.
No, that's definitely messed up, Nancy, I feel about that.
Yeah.
Ed?
Yeah, I spoke with the director of finance, and, you know, yes, we're going to end up going above the revenue neutral rate, even with the flat, the flat tax levy, but the amount, considering the services we're going to continue to provide in the city, is well worth the small amount. And I'll tell you what, I talked to the director of finance about, you know, I said, how much is this going to cost the average homeowner? Within the city, if you own a home of approximately $250,000, this will cost you maybe $5 for the year. For what you continue to get, the services and the products that we're able to provide, I think $5 a year is well worth it.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to share my comments, I will, I'll tell everybody here on the, on the commission and everybody that's listening, this has actually been one of the toughest decisions I've had to make, I think since I've been here. I've been on both sides, Robert has done a great job of providing so much feedback, and I'll tell you, you know, definitely going revenue neutral, it is, you know, in a highly inflationary environment, costs continue to go up, everybody feels it, and if you hold the line every year, like you said, Nancy, like, you're going to see services drop, and, you know, that's what it is. You know, there's a fine balance, I think the gentleman earlier talked about, you know, how much blood can you squeeze out of a turnip? You know, there's a fine balance of making sure that we support our city residents with the right services, and, you know, maintain a high level of service for what is asked. I don't see boatloads of room in the budget to do other things, but, you know, it's also a balance too, with making sure that we maintain a quality environment for city employees as well. It directly impacts attrition rates and directly impacts service levels for our residents here. So it's an interesting balance for sure. I think it was also interesting through the budget process, and as we asked, you know, put the survey out and asked questions, it was interesting, you know, we found out, we've, we've got some gaps, right, with the pool, it is a, it's a cost center for us right now, for sure, and we're, we're definitely losing money there. I definitely saw some comments, you know, and heard that folks would like to pay more for that service, to have the pool. I think folks would like to pay more to have the theater still thriving, there's definitely, I agree, there was a desire to keep, you know, a lot of those amenities that we have today. And right now, you know, that's something that we can address when it comes to fees and things like that, I think we can make up some ground there. You know, there's, there's other things, and we'll talk about it in probably some future meetings, we'll talk about some initiatives to drive more revenue in to the city. But I think there's, for me, there's still some questions that I've got, I know there's some areas we're spending money right now, that we don't necessarily see the actual tangible results on what we're getting, you know, the return on our investment. I've heard some really positive things, you know, I'll say too, from Main Street, I like where they're going with the direction, the goals they have to generate more contributions their way, they're going to definitely impact our local businesses. It is a fine balance though, and, you know, we're, we're going to have to raise rates, you know, eventually, if we want to maintain with just the, the cost of living. That being said, I do believe, knowing what we could do to adjust a few things, I think we can squeeze another year out, if we hold it neutral, one, two years, I don't know, we've got a lot of costs that are coming down the pike, especially in our wastewater, part of our service, some, some major expenses coming up. So all the more reason, I think, why when we can, if we can still hold the line as much as we can, I think we need to try and give a, you know, another look. And it's really, this whole process this year has opened my mind to where costs are going, and where we have some gray areas that we need to get resolved. For me, I think bottom line is I can, in good conscience, vote to, you know, exceed knowing that there's other areas we could pursue first, to see if we could bring some more money back in. And if that's unknown, I don't think I can just willy-nilly vote to pass it on to the citizens to take, take care of that, because we have some more work to do on our side. So with that, I just need a roll call vote.
I recommend a motion at first, and then a second.
A motion, sorry, to, okay, so a motion-
Oh, it's this rule, yeah, okay.
On approval to exceed revenue neutral rate.
So move.
Second.
And then we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, just kidding, Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
Commissioner Pittman?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowden?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed 5-0. Sorry, 4-1, I guess, I used to say that.
You can jump on board if you want to, sir.
Yeah, I'm good, I appreciate that. No, no, appreciate you guys listening.
No, I am, my good words.
So then from there, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing tonight, on the 2025 operating to 2029 capital budgets, and we need a motion to open.
So move.
Second.
All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 5-0, open public hearing, it's open, staff comments, go ahead, Mr. Kitchens.
No comments, sir. Again, the budget has been submitted, and the staff recommends approval in its current status.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open up again for any citizen comments, resident comments from anybody? Sir, if you can go ahead and come on up, and if you could stand up at the mic and provide your name and address. Sir, sir, if you could go ahead, we just need to, on this, follow some protocol tonight. Sir, could you state, sir, could you please state your name and address again? Sorry for the record.
My name is Mike Collins, 11504, High Court, Leavenworth, Kansas, 66048.
Thank you.
My recommendation is, the information that that gave, pardon me, the information that that gentleman gave us about how much it's going to cost, might have been a good thing to put in the paper five months ago, to give people the, you know, what you're working with, because when you read all the stuff that is available in the budget, and you read everything that's in the paper, you think it's going to cost you $10,000?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, recommendation?
Thank you.
One more, since I'm up here. What's it cost you to maintain that theater building?
I think right now, we're at $60,000 a year, I think, and we're, we're bringing in about 30, about half of that in costs.
That's not going to get any better?
At his current state, you're right, at his current state, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is closed. So now we need a motion to adopt the 2025 operating capital budgets.
So move.
Second.
All right, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed 4-1. Item F, Consider Resolution B 2376, Approval of 2025 Housing Budget for Planners 2.
Need a second motion for that.
Yep, just need a motion for that.
Okay, I move approval of the 2025 housing budget for planners, too.
Okay, motion to the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingela.
Aye.
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 And for that budget, yes, on that, yep, aye. All right. General items, number five, transient merchant waiver request for a police collector's show at Riverfront Community Center. Thank you, Roberta.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, before you this evening, for consideration is a request for transient merchant permit waiver to the Riverfront Community Center on April 25th and 26th, 2025, for a police collector's show. Mr. Kenneth LaMester, the applicant, would like to hold the collectible show as a fundraiser for the Leavenworth Prison Historical Society. He's preparing for around 100-plus vendors, and those vendors would sell their items. City code prohibits transient merchant permits on city property to include the Riverfront Community Center, however, the city code does allow the commission to grant a waiver. All fees for the use of the facility and permits would still apply, the waiver would simply allow the sale at the community center. So tonight, the request before you is to grant the waiver request for the transient merchant permit. Tammy Metzger, our community center manager, and applicant, Kenneth LaMester are here, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
No, I have a comment, Ken LaMester does a great job at really anything he touches, so I'm, I'm all for this.
Sounds like a good idea, yes, thank you, thank you, Ken.
I move that we grant a waiver in the transient merchant permit for use of the community center for a police collector's show on April 25th and April 26th, 2025.
Second. All right, motion to the second, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And, sir, if you would-
Did you want to say something?
Yep, go ahead.
Get up and talk about it.
Just like to take this opportunity, a few weeks ago, I kind of let count on a bag at the function, and the Leavenworth County Prison Historical Society is what I've started. It is an organization that will be dedicated not only to the prisons in the local area, but all of law enforcement in this area as well. With coming to a ground zero-
With coming to a ground zero, from a ground zero to where I want to be, I want to do things such as recreate DARE programs, get with Jermaine, work with the youth in this community, partner with law enforcement. I'm a retired law enforcement officer of 32 years. Most of the people that contact me know me as the prison historian. I'm retired as a prison historian in the United States, been a veteran of Leavenworth. This town has a rich history in law enforcement. When I did a presentation a couple of weeks ago, I brought forth the fact that a newspaper article given by an interview of James Butler Hickok, Wild Bill Hickok, he talked about killing his first man ever in the city of Leavenworth, Kansas. One of the other things that he was, he was a law enforcement officer here for a short period of time. Bill Cully, another Wild West law enforcement officer, served here as well. This town also is the birthplace of federal Bureau prisons. There would be no federal Bureau prisons because before there was Alcatraz, before there was Marion, before there was the Alcatraz of the Rockies, there was Leavenworth. We dealt with the worst of the worst, and were from gangsters to domestic and international terrorists. The police department, the county sheriff's office, has dealt with the same in their history. J.T. Taylor, a lot of people don't know who he is. He was the first man holding possession of chief police of the city of Leavenworth. He was the grandson, great-grandson of William Henry Harrison, the President of the United States, and James Harrison, our original signer of the Declaration of Independence. So, as you can see, there's history in this town. Along with the federal prison, this was also the birthplace of the Federal Bureau of Criminal Identification, before it became part of the FBI and moved in 1930. Kenneth John Ferrier, a Scotland Yard detective, helped set up and organize, and the son of the federal prison warden at the time, Robert McCloudery, would testify in numerous court cases and multiple trials with the art finger frame as his expertise. So, created, using, partnering, getting with the youth with law enforcement, bridging the gap, that's something I've been longing to do for quite some time, and the time is now. And I greatly appreciate you all approving the collector's show. Now I've got a lot of work ahead of me.
You've got until April.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
All right, we'll move on to item six, Resolution B 2377, Summer Concert Series and Moonlight Market Special Event Street Closure for Possession and Consumption of Alcohol.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, before you this evening, for consideration is a resolution approving the Leavenworth Main Street special event, known as Summer Concert Series and Moonlight Market, which would close motor vehicle traffic to a specific street and allow for the possession and consumption of alcohol flicker. Main Street is adding a new component to the Summer Concert Series in the September event by holding a moonlight market. That would include vendors, food trucks, beverages, prevent for the attendees to shop, eat, drink, and enjoy the live music. The event will be held on Saturday, September 14th. The event itself will be from 3:00 to 10:00, and the street closure would start around noon or 12:30 to allow for the farmer's market and city market attendees to be able to clear out the space safely and efficiently. So, in order to allow the drinks to happen during the vendor space, which would happen along Cherokee Street from the intersection of 7th and Cherokee to the entrance of the water department, because we always have to leave that open in case there was a water department emergency and they need to get their vehicles in and out, hopefully no main breaks. So tonight is a resolution to approve that closure and allow for the alcoholic beverages to be in the street so those people can drink and shop at the vendor booths that will be at the event. Ms. Haley Shaw is here, along with Ms. Sam Carpenter of Leavenworth Main Street, and interim city manager slash police chief, Pat Kitchens is here, if you have any questions about the road closure.
Yeah. Maybe, first off, Ms. Kitchens, got any comments about that right there?
No, it's fine, we'll, we'll be fine.
Yeah, it's nice to, that it's less than a block to close.
Right.
No problem.
When we send out notices that we're going to close, are we sending to the address itself or who owns, the address of who owns the building?
It goes to the property owner, because it's the only information that we have, because that's, we use GIS, and then it goes to the property owners, the only information that's tracked.
Okay. What happens, they don't get that information too?
That's up to the property owners, and we've tried to send it to the actual physical locations in town. We've attempted that a few times. The problem with that is a lot of, some of those places don't get mail, they're not recognized as addresses, so we get a lot of them back. So, that's why we also advise whenever a road closure does happen, that this, the event coordinator would also, from the event side, would also be reaching out to those businesses to let them know, because we can only do so much with the information we have, and so we always ask them to help, help us get the word out as much as they can.
And Haley, do you mind doing that?
It's okay. We've been in contact with them.
You have already, okay, good, because I know that the last event, some people didn't hear about it, then we hear about it, so I think it's going to be like a team effort there.
So, what we have been doing at the police department is, as a practice, is when these events are coming, say for example, on Saturday, like a Wednesday night overnight, midnight officers will walk down the street and put flyers on the cars that are parked there, just, hey, this weekend, traffic's going to be disrupted, and so we do that effort pretty consistently, and it works sometimes. Ultimately, if we have to move a car, we're moving it, we're not impounding it, so there wouldn't be a cost to the owner of the car, but we do have to move it and clear the road. And so, it's generally been two or three cars, if we've had any, that we've had to do that to.
Good. Do you want to talk about your event, Haley, real quick?
So in years past, does that sound okay?
It's on.
In years past, many of you are familiar with the fact that Main Street has hosted free summer concerts down in Haymarket Square. We have decided to go ahead and expand that experience and add some different components to it. So this year, we hosted the M80s in July, which was a wonderful event, and we saw a pretty remarkable increase in attendance. We had around 400 individuals that came out to that event, so we're so thankful that that was a great, great, well-attended event. So in September, we are going to be expanding the concert to three different musicians. We'll be starting at 3:00 in the afternoon, and we'll be going until 10:00 PM. We are anticipating around 30 craft vendors. This will be an actual evening night market, and then we have roughly 10 pending agreements with food trucks. So there'll definitely be quite an experience for individuals to come. And because this is something that is attracting individuals who may be potential vendors from outside of Leavenworth and Lansing, this, this turns into a greater Kansas City metro event as well. So, we're excited to have everyone come out for that.
Is this with the Jeeps too?
So the Jeep is going to be October 12th, and that's called the Rev and Rock Jeep Fest. That is, has a similar footprint on downtown. We probably will be discussing a different map and a different, there may be some additional street closures, but we, we have meetings set up with the PD, and we'll talk further with Kitchens about that. But just, you know, be on the watch for updates in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, if there's no more comments, we just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt and approve Resolution B 2377.
Second.
Motion to the second, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed five to zero. Item seven, bids, contracts, and agreements. Recent award of bid for Dia Casino Mechanical Contractors, Inc., for Fire Station Number One, HVAC replacement project. Hey, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, appreciate talking tonight. On July 23rd, meeting, a week in, before you to request the approval of a bid received on replacing the HVAC system, the air conditioning sidebar system now there at Station One, 24 years old. After y'all approved it, about a week later, we, we received a phone call from the bidder at that time and said that they had messed up a little bit in their estimation, and, and so, you know, just asked, well, how much are you talking? It was over $20,000. You know, and, you know, they were very sorry about doing it, it was, you know, just, just a miscommunication on their end. Staff, we discussed a few different options, and we think it'd be best to go ahead and, and they understand, you know, that we would do that, that we would reject this bid, and then we'd just kind of go back out again.
Good.
As far as timeline, we could still get it done by the end of the year, and actually when it starts getting a little cooler, probably better without. And since the way through, we've actually been down a few days to have it repaired. So, that's our recommendation, is to reject a bid, that's kind of what happened, and just we'll go back out. See what we come out, come out.
Okay. Questions from anybody or comments?
That's what you guys want to do, I'm fine with that.
Do we know, like, how many others bid on this originally?
We, this was the only one that, that we opened up, that was opened up, the bid. What we found out of the fact, we don't know any dollar amounts, but like, one of them, we, we had a requirement in there that they had to show up to a meeting, and there were several that did, and they didn't, didn't end up submitting. One, he called later and wanted to submit, and he just told, hey, it's too late, he didn't show up to the mandatory meeting. So that, you know, he had a death in the family or something, so there was a few things like that. We feel pretty optimistic that we will get more bids this time.
Okay, okay, cool. Good deal?
Good.
Any other questions then? Come on in.
I move that we reject the bid for the Fire Station Number One HVAC replacement and allow staff to reevaluate the project and go back out for bid.
Second. All right, motion to the second, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, Chief.
Okay, item eight, First Consideration Ordinance for Rezoning Certain Properties at Second Avenue in Santa Fe Street from RM 12 to R16.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is a city-initiated rezoning request. In recent years, we've had quite a few requests for rezonings and special use permits for existing non-conforming properties. As an older city, where a lot of neighborhoods and buildings were constructed before we ever had any sort of zoning or regulations that were enacted in the 1960s, we ended up with a lot of non-conforming properties that were already there by the time we put zoning into place. So what that means for these non-conforming, non-conforming properties is if they don't conform to standards as we have them today, if they don't conform to our current regulations, they can't do things like expand, they can't rebuild if there's a fire, things like that. So, what we've also found is that it seems that lending practices have changed, and so folks are having a harder time getting financing or refinancing, insurance, that type of thing, on these existing non-conforming properties. If their lender or title company, something asks us for a zoning confirmation letter, we cannot say in writing that, yes, this property could be rebuilt as is should it be destroyed by natural causes. So that's holding a lot of people up on just being able to kind of maintain their, their own properties as they are. So with all of these requests for rezonings and special use permits that we've had coming through due to these non-conforming situations, the Planning Commission has asked staff to look at ways that maybe we could help homeowners out, property owners out with these situations that they didn't cause, they didn't do anything to get into this situation. So, one of the things that we are able to do that's allowed in state statute is that the city can initiate rezoning requests. Typically, a property owner would request a rezoning, but the city can identify properties that are appropriate for rezoning. So, Planning Commission asked us to take a look at that, so we identified this group of 15 houses over at Second and Santa Fe. All of these properties are owned by, are occupied by existing single-family homes. They all happen to be zoned residential multifamily, which, based on our current regulations, they couldn't even get a special use permit to rebuild a single-family home on those properties should their house burn down. So, this rezoning from residential multifamily, RMF, to R16, which is our high-density, single-family residential zoning district, makes all of these properties conforming. The city is not looking to change anything with them, it's just making those existing homes conforming so that they can get a building permit to say, expand their home. They could rebuild it if it were to burn down, they could refinance it without having to jump through a bunch of hoops. So, the 15 properties that it affects are listed there. R16 is kind of conforming with the rest of the neighborhood that's around it, so that fits in. After we sent out the notices for this, we did have a few property owners call us with questions, just asking kind of what was going on, as we explained that to everybody. At the Planning Commission meeting earlier this month, we had a number of residents show up also and ask questions, just kind of wondering what was going on, how this would affect them, that kind of thing. So, once we, you know, kind of went over everything with anybody who had questions, nobody had any concerns that they stated, and so the Planning Commission did vote four to zero to recommend approval of this rezoning request based upon all of the factors that are included in your policy report. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
I have a question, but I have a comment. I did get some of the, my constituents who were in that 15 call me, and once I found out that it was actually better for them, and it's going to help with their insurance and that sort of thing, they were totally fine. It just was confusing, I think, to people.
It was confusing.
When you don't know-
You don't know.
Yes, absolutely, and so we anticipated we would get calls. I can 100% see why you get a letter saying the city is wanting to rezone your property, that may be a little bit alarming for anybody. So, we are glad that people called us up and came to the meeting and asked what was going on, and like I said, anybody that we had the chance to talk to, and during the meeting, everyone, yep, once they understood, was like, oh, this actually helps us.
Yeah, I appreciate the Planning Commission going through all of this too, because it, I, I had some questions too, but reading through all their, all of your minutes, it really helped clarify that, thank you.
For sure.
Cool deal, any other comments?
Oh, and then just to kind of note, I know it's in the minutes, but this question did come up, and just kind of for the record, this doesn't affect any of our property taxes. The way the county assesses for taxes is not based on our zoning, it's based on the actual use of a property, and so a few people were concerned about that, if it was going to affect our property taxes. And the county doesn't really look at our zoning, they're looking at what's actually there, so all these properties are already assessed at a single-family rate, and then this will not affect that.
Cool deal. So we just need a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All agree? Aye?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
With that, we'll move on to the concern agenda.
I will that we approve claims for August 9th, 2024, through August 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $925,267.61, net amount for payroll number 16, effective August 9, 2024, in the amount of $405,903.87, no police or fire pension.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to the second, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passed five to zero. That concludes main items there. Ms. Kitchens, you got any comments?
No comments this evening, sir.
Okay, Ed?
I'm happy to be here, I hope everybody enjoys the cool weather that they say is coming. I certainly look forward to it. God bless, and everybody have a great week.
I don't have anything, same thing, I echo him. God bless, have a fantastic week.
All right.
Have a great week and be careful in the heat.
God bless, and I'll see you in a few weeks to play some pickleball.
That's right.
All right. Why'd you say that? Yeah, but definitely appreciate everybody coming tonight, God bless, and we'll see you next meeting.